Everybody with that we will start our Selma City Council regular meeting it's November twenty first twenty twenty two at six P M. In the Selma City Council chambers at seventeen ten Tucker Street, Selma, California nine three six six two. Thanks for joining us. Our teleconference phone number is one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with A B three six one. And which allows us to teleconference and to have council members who join the meeting by teleconference even though most of us or all of us will be person tonight. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda. Press star nine to raise hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Okay, tonight do we have Pastor Zapata here yet? We have Pastor Zapata on the. Okay, with that we will start, we will have our invocation. I'll lead us tonight. For everybody, please bow their heads. Dear Lord, we pray for a productive meeting tonight and thank everybody that showed up for this meeting doing their civic duty. And we hope that everybody has a safe and happy Thanksgiving, Lord. Shower your benefits on our city and all of our citizens. With that, we will have our. A roll call. Or we could do our.
Please stand for the pledge.
We'll do our pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will have our roll call now and I will call it. Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Councilmember Gara.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. And Mayor Robertson is here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation items on the agenda may not be presented. Or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code section five four nine five four dot two B. Oral communications at this time, any member of the public may address city council regarding any item over which council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will take place on any of the items presented. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and in order to limit the city's liability, we'd ask that you address all comments towards city council. Do we have any oral communications tonight?
I do.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll stay here and do it right. Okay, we do have a presentation today. My Lions member, come up, please. A couple of months ago, we did have a fundraiser event out Pioneer Village and it was pack fight number twenty seven. And we had the police officer and a fireman. They did a pillow fight exhibition. So to to we did make some money. So what we want to do is give you guys a token, some money back to to yours association. So to the firefighters and the police association. So. You guys are.
One for each of you guys.
One for each. So on behalf of this Central Valley Lioness Lions Club and Pack Fight Promotions, we'd like to present to Selma Firefighter Association this token of our appreciation. And to Selma Police Officer Association, we'd like to present this to our. On behalf of.
Could you guys take a picture up front? It'd be good. Come up front. Yeah. You know, we're aiming for a rematch next year.
You want us to stand so they can see us?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
If we have anybody else who has anything to say at this time, come on up.
Hello, Isaac Garza, twelve five eleven South Mitchell Avenue. I want to let you guys know how everything's going with Operation Santa. We just raffled off her PlayStation five right before the meeting. Shelley. Herrera was the winner and it was twenty five dollars per ticket for the PlayStation five. We had fifty tickets that were sold. With that being said, we raised fourteen hundred dollars. And all this money is going to be donated to the families that are going to be in need. We also have an email address. It's Operation Salma two thousand. Twenty-two five five nine, I believe it is, at gmail dot com. You guys can nominate any family that you guys think that may need help or that do need help. We are here to sponsor families in need. Like I've been telling you guys for the past couple of meetings, we have gotten together as a community on these around Selma. And right now we have about five people that are helping us out. With that being said, we have not yet reached our goal to get the nonprofit organization number, which we are working on and we will have by next year. I could. Almost guarantee that. I just want to let you guys know how everything's going with that and that's pretty much all I have to say. Oh, yeah, by the way, we're raffling off a smoker barbecue pit. Twenty-five dollars per entry fee. There's only thirty-five tickets sold. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, Isaac, we've been my my staff been trying to get ahold of you. We have no social media, so if you can go buy our business, we'll go ahead and donate to you.
Yeah, there are oral communications in person.
Hi, I'm Mark Medina, thirty-seven sixty-one Wright Street. So last. Last meeting, there we go, that sounds better. Last meeting, we had a little thing about the vendor pop-ups. So I got together with a couple of other of the hosts that do it. I'm a vendor, so I do photography and photo booths. Got together with a few of them and we want to be able as a group work with the city. To come up with a free structure that's going to be fair for everybody. I know right now there's a sixty day, I have five timer, correctly sixty day wait period. That is a little long in the tooth, but there's probably good reasons for it. And on behalf of these of this group of people, this coalition, we would like to be able to work with the city to come up with. A. Permit system, fee system and fee schedule that's going to work for everybody and be able to help Selma grow. Again, pop-ups actually bring in traffic from the outside. They help both. The people here in the community have things to do. They help the small businesses here get the traffic that comes in and anything that brings in traffic and consumers. Fills the coffers and the sales tax revenue that the city needs. So if we can all work hand in hand, this would be a good thing. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you. The manager, have they been in touch with you, any of the pop-up vendors to this moment?
We have received some feedback via email and we're collecting that feedback. Staff has a meeting scheduled internally. And after we meet internally, we're going to be doing outreach to the folks who have contacted us. So if you can email. Our city clerks inbox with your feedback, then we can incorporate that and then reach back out to you.
Then we'll schedule a council meeting to review that as an agenda item.
We are planning on placing it on a future agenda item, correct?
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the phone? Okay, that will bring it back and we are going to have our special presentation as part of our first agenda item since it's they are one and the same. And we will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. Complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote for purposes of discussion. Any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they would like removed?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item I one C.
And I'd like to remove one B.
I'd like to remove one A. So there are no items to approve, so we will move on to item one A, consideration of fuel agreement between the city of Selma and Selma Unified School District. So the question I had is. The thirty thousand, was it always thirty thousand or is that because gas has gone up so much?
Yeah, I think the last time that this came to council for approval, it was more in the range of twenty thousand fifteen to twenty thousand per month. And I should clarify that it this is an annual or excuse me, a monthly figure. Both the rising cost of gasoline and diesel fuel have gone up, but also the number of vehicles in our fleet has also gone up. So that's contributed to the increase in cost to the city.
And then does the 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 cost, it says it tracks with the wholesaler, about how much less on a percentage basis is that than the typical retailer would pay the pumps?
You know what? That's a good question. I don't know what the that margin is that that they pay, but I can find out from the school district.
Just because the city pays a three percent sort of royalty over that, hopefully it's like appreciably more than the three percent. So the city does better.
Sure, yeah, we can confirm what that margin is.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Did anyone have any other questions on item one A? Okay, anybody have any questions on the fuel agreement? Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve item one A?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes. Okay, item one B, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Well, I was at the Smart Center over the weekend and. The the mural is looking nice, but I did have some concerns because it is on. A city property and so one of the items is on page fifteen. I know that today we're we're approving to amend the completion date, right? But or giving them an extension to January thirty first, twenty twenty-three. But like I mentioned, my concern was with item nine on page fifteen. Now that you're the rendering doesn't show it very well. But in one of the butterfly monarchs, there are the, I guess, I don't know what they're called, but there's a fist. I guess they call them right here, the so social justice fists. And when you look at them on the mural, they are very. I would say like very political, very controversial, very, I I don't feel that it's. Appropriate to have on a city building. And so that was one of my biggest concerns. And so I don't know if today we can actually have them revisit that. I don't know if anybody's here from from the. Five five nine mural, but I would really like to revisit that. That drawing that's on that butterfly. Have you guys seen it? You guys haven't seen it?
Looking at this.
Yeah, so this this right here, this butterfly here. When you get on the actual mural, it just doesn't look like something that the city should be sponsoring.
I can't see it. I can't tell. It just looked like a bunch of hands.
Yeah, it's raised fists.
And and just to clarify, you were referring to section nine of the agreement attachment, council member.
Section nine and it was on page. So initially this application had talked about. Down on page fifteen of the agenda, but it's the application where it talks about the monarch, the there is one monarch butterfly where wings have images within them. To the top left of the wing, we we see a reference to the Aztec and indigenous culture. To the bottom left, we reference a social justice fist. Of course, they didn't put the the Aztec eagle because that was copyright infringement. And then. And it's edged behind representing the continued fight for equity when it comes to. Workers' rights, but the the fist that I saw there, like I said, they're just, they're very, I don't even know what the word is, but it's very political. They look like. Like. I don't want to say, but it's like a Black Lives Matter fist is what they look like to me. And so I don't think that that should be something that we need to be putting on our buildings. We'll actually see them in person. That's what they look like.
I haven't seen him in person. I'd like to continue that. I mean, if you want to make it an agenda item, council member. To bring back the content, I'd like to go by and actually look at it for myself because in the picture, it looks pretty innocuous, just looks like some raised fist.
Not not in person.
I'd have to see and judge for myself.
It's bigger, you know, and and yeah, you guys are. Like I said, I was just there Saturday and so I I had some concerns with that.
The item tonight is an extension, though, right?
Yeah.
It's not about the content.
Correct.
We're just continuing or putting it on the agenda to actually talk about the content and what what it has, especially because like I said, it's a on a public. Building. And so I have concerns about that.
Yeah, and although it's about the content, I I think the to the council member's point, it would be contingent upon addressing the concerns about. The extension would be contingent upon addressing concerns of the content of the mural. We can conduct outreach to to the organizers. And place it back on the agenda for December fifth. And at that time, it's still well within the extension period of January thirty first. So if that's the desire of the council.
And I would ask the mural organizers to be invited to that. I mean, it's public record, right? But maybe an invitation so they can explain it. Okay.
The motion or are we okay with extending it to December fifth?
Right, we would. Yeah, you could do a motion to extend. If you don't do anything, then no action will be taken and then something will have to happen down the down the road.
Okay.
The manager, I just have a quick question. Didn't they bring this? And present it to the council, the entire council when they had it up there and was that even?
I I addressed it.
No, was it on there?
And I addressed it and that's why I didn't vote for it. That's why I really had concerns about that.
I I thought the poem was your that you had the big concerns with and we didn't, we voted not in the spirit of working together, we voted not to put it on there.
It was it was the UFW logo and then it was also the the poem and then I also had concerns that it was very. Just had like a political undertone and so there was those were my concerns and that's why I voted against it. And so now seeing it in person, it's exactly what I felt.
So would the motion be to table the item until December fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
No.
Okay, Mayor Robertson, no. Right, with that, we'll move on to the check register date eleven twenty-one twenty-two. Councilmember Gara.
Okay, page thirty-seven, have a couple on here, check number. And this one first. Check number eight zero five five four, says data ticket. Parking citation processing, September twenty of twenty-two and it looks like it's, hold a minute. No, I'm sorry. No, that's right. It's in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty cents.
So that would be the eight zero five five five. Data path. So there's data ticket and data path. You're referring to data path, council member?
Is that the? Yep, yes, it is.
Okay, those are, that's an annual fee for a software system and hardware that we use for the art center. And it's billed through Data Path, our IT services provider.
Okay, is that on a monthly or is that?
It's an annual.
Annual, okay.
And it's budgeted.
And I have another one. One is, let me just. It's right underneath, eight zero five five seven, Department of General Services Admin Hearings, August twenty-first and May of twenty-second in the amount of. Ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. That for.
I'm gonna have to come back with you or to you on with that because it could be a couple of different things and I don't want to give you the the wrong information about that. Would you? Would you prefer if I sent that as an as a memo to council or come back at the next meeting with that information?
You can send it to the entire council. That'd be good.
Are you gonna pull this, are you gonna pull this side check registr item to the next meeting for this?
Me? No?
Oh.
Okay, eight zero five five three, Cook's Communication Light Bars and Sirens for New Command Trucks, twenty-three thousand bucks. Is that what the going rate is on sirens these days?
That is.
Light bars, wow.
Yes, for all three vehicles, it includes light bars, sirens, radios. It's it's quite extensive. This the money is the twenty-three thousand dollars was previously budgeted. Cook's Communications didn't bill us unfortunately until the parts were actually here and installed.
So they were billed as like part of the vehicles themselves?
Yeah, it was budgeted on, I believe, last last fiscal.
Got it. So this is really all already been accounted for and paid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then. Last item, eight zero five six eight, Guile Enterprises Janitorial Services, October four thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. Is that their monthly bill? This seems like a lot for janitorial.
Yeah, so the reason we use Guile Enterprises is because our our staff member that normally is in charge of janitorial for city facilities and this includes the police department. It includes city hall and a couple of other buildings like the senior center. Normally that would be a staff member doing that, but because we were short-staffed there, that's why we have this contract. But yes, to your question, that is a monthly bill.
So it's because we don't have enough people in public works doing that.
That person is is out on on leave currently.
That probably would have been there like one of their full-time duties. I mean, that's that's a lot of work. Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else have any questions about the check register? Okay, do we have any questions from the public? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone who'd like to ask questions? Okay, is? Yeah, come on up.
Isaac Garza, twelve five eleven South Mitchell Avenue. So last meeting that we had was for the the child that got hit. While she was crossing the street at the school, I believe it's Wright Street. You guys should, you guys just said twenty-three thousand dollars for brand new sirens and lights for the fire truck. Why don't you guys put lights up for the schooling? Instead of doing something like that, because this could save lives. And maybe not cause head trauma to children. Because that's that's a lot of money. I mean, that that's all I have to say.
Got it. Thanks for your input. Appreciate it, Mr. Garza. Anyone else with any input at this time? Okay, is there a motion to approve item one C?
I'll make a motion.
There a second?
Second it.
Okay. Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro, councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes. Okay, that will move on to our first agenda item of the evening. Which is also our special presentation item, a presentation by Cosmont Companies regarding tax increment financing analysis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to have Joe Diegues and Stephanie Ontiveros from Cosmont Companies here to. Present regarding the results of their analysis that that they conducted for the city of Selma with regard to infrastructure financing districts. So I will hand it over to Mr. Diegues and if you have any questions, feel free to hold them until the end.
Thank you. Go to the next slide. Good evening, Mayor Robertson, members of the city council. Joe Diegues here with Cosmont, joined by Stephanie, as the city city manager said, she gets the hard questions. So we've been busy for the last several months on some infrastructure funding and financing analysis as directed by staff. We're looking at various funding and financing tools to address things like sewer, roadway, other types of infrastructure with the goal of catalyzing and supporting new development and growth.
Joe, pardon, will we get copy of this presentation?
Certainly hope so. Yes, absolutely.
Will we get an email to the council members?
Yes, we can send that out.
Thank you.
Of course. Types of tools that we're talking about, as you may recall from months ago, but it's been some times we'll cover all of this tax increment financing, TIF, community facilities districts, or CFDs. I Bank, so California Infrastructure Bank, grants and other tools with the theme of bundling these things together, not looking at any one of them in isolation, but bringing them together. One of the main findings we came up with are, number one, some of the greatest benefit for the city comes from partnership with other taxing entities such as the county of Fresno. It's never guaranteed to get a partnership like that, requires negotiation, but it has been done elsewhere within the state. Just to sort of cut to it on the next potential next steps, we'd like to hear most importantly, your questions here for any concerns with some of the things that we talk about. And then subject to any of that feedback or questions or concerns, possible next steps include initial outreach to a potential partner like the county. To determine viability for a partnership before coming back to you with something like a resolution of intention to implement one of these things. Next slide, please. So we'll cover contextually what are some of the sites we were focusing on and the infrastructure needs. Next slide, please. So we'll cover, uh, contextually, what are some of the sites we were focusing on and the infrastructure needs. A little bit more detail on the tools that we were looking at. Number three, the actual numbers, funding and financing, uh, financing capacity and the timing of that capacity. Number four, the return on investment for Selma, so not just about how much funding capacity the tools can generate, but what does it mean for the general fund over the near, mid and long term? And then lastly, next steps and the timing for those potential next steps. So a map of the areas they were looking at, uh, these tools, especially EIFD and, uh, CFD, they have the ability to be non-contiguous, and so it enables us at the city level to be selective about the sites we put in these districts. And so our analysis looked quite selectively at opportunity sites for new development or rehabilitation. A lot of the strategy for these districts is not, not over encumbering the general fund. So it's oftentimes not beneficial to put, you know, half the city or the whole city in one of these districts, but to be quite selective and we, which sites get brought in. The ones that we look at total approximately nine hundred and eighty-nine acres. There are some that are currently in the city, four hundred and sixty-two of those acres. It's about twelve percent of the city's current acreage. And then there are another five hundred and twenty-eight acres that are currently unincorporated, uh, most for all of which likely for future annexation. What that amounts to in, uh, assessed property value is about fifty million dollars. Four percent of the city's total, uh, assessed value. And just super high level, when we see ratios like that, something, uh, twelve percent of your acreage, but only four percent of your assessed value. To us, that's a ratio that indicates potential value capture, areas that are, can call it underperforming on a value per acre basis. And that's an immediate sign for us that maybe this is appropriate for value capture mechanisms like this. What we found in discussions with city staff are, there are a lot of infrastructure needs. Just an example of those are, are there sewer needs that, um, that were likely presented in this council mo- months ago? Uh, and the costs we would expect continue to, to increase. So we're not just looking at sort of infrastructure in the middle of nowhere. We're targeting infrastructure that directly benefits some of those opportunity sites that we previously looked at. So by resolving these infrastructure needs and others, we believe there is a direct defensible, uh, sort of but-for argument that but-for resolving these infrastructure needs, these sites cannot be realized in terms of their full development potential. And just this sort of sample list on the sewer side, about twenty million, that's sort of helpful when we go into the funding capacity side of things. So just a graphic for the types of tools, I covered this a bit in the intro, so no one tool solves everything. Okay, that's probably the one major theme here, but there are a variety of tools that work quite well together. Tax increment, community facilities districts, we'll talk some more about the specifics, um, grants and other. So take them one at a time, certainly the, the, we spent a lot of time on tax increment financing and CFDs in this analysis. So tax increment financing, despite starting with the word tax, is not a new tax, may be obvious to many of the folks here, but it's worth clarifying. What we mean by tax increment financing, similar to the old redevelopment agencies, you draw a boundary within your community. And as value grows within that boundary, the city and potentially other taxing entities have the option of allocating some portion of the future property tax within that boundary into the special purpose fund, the tax increment district, with the remainder continuing to flow to the general fund. So it changes nothing about the way property taxes today are split up. We're talking about allocating like a retirement account or, or college savings account for a child, putting a piece of future dollars away into a special fund to make sure there's money there for some priority. In this case, that priority would be infrastructure. So not a new tax, the property owner, the resident, the businesses see no change on their property tax bill. This is really sort of behind the scenes on an accounting basis, the city, potentially also the county, just putting away some piece of those future dollars with the dedication for infrastructure. There are some rules about how that gets allocated and what you can spend the money on. We're gonna talk about the EIFD example of tax increment financing, that's enhanced infrastructure financing district. It's just one type of tax increment financing today in California, but it is the most prevalent, the most popular, due largely to its flexibility. So, so what do we mean by all that? So it's a long-term district, they can be authorized up to forty-five years from their first debt issuance. Issuing debt or, or bonds, in other words, is not a requirement, but it does, uh, happen a lot with these districts to issue debt. Uh, governance is important, so there's actually a new entity that gets set up to govern this thing. It wouldn't just be the same city council members, um, sort of changing hats and sitting at the head of this new entity. This new entity called a public financing authority gets set up. And the composition of that body depends on who's giving dollars. In scenarios where cities are doing these on their own, the composition is five individuals, where three of the individuals are members of the city council, mayor or council members. And then there are two members of the public appointed by the city council, so three and two. In scenarios we have elsewhere within the state where we've got cities and counties partnering, we've kept it to be five people, it can actually be more, but for ease of administration, they're often kept at five, where two of the members are members of the city council, one is a county supervisor, one is a public member appointed by the city council, and one is a public member appointed by the county board of supervisors, sort of a two, one, one, one. Um, very importantly, it's not like the city would be sort of totally handing the keys to this new entity. Very importantly, the first job of this PFA, this public financing authority is to prepare a plan, an infrastructure financing plan that is required to be quite prescriptive about what are you gonna pay for and how many dollars over what time period? And that plan is actually required to be, number one, brought back to the city council for full approval. If the county is a partner, it would have to be brought to the county board of supervisors. And in any case, it's presented over a series of at least four public meetings and hearings that are required to be spaced out, at least thirty days between each meeting, and asked to include at least the property owners and residents within the boundary. And the purpose of those meetings, just sort of a heads up, it can be very repetitive, but it's for the sake of transparency to present that plan. What are you gonna do with the money? What timing? How many dollars are we talking about? So that it's very clear, there's sort of nowhere to hide in this law. Um, very different from the old redevelopment agencies, that didn't have to be this, uh, transparent. So that's the process. The approvals, though, there's actually no vote required to form this district or to issue debt, so no vote of, of, of landowners or residents. But there is at that last public hearing a majority protest opportunity, meaning that if the majority of landowners and residents within the boundary come out and say, you know, sort of, no, we don't like this plan, that protest has the ability to halt formation. But short of that protest, these districts would then be approved to both form the district and even to issue debt in the future. Of course, subject to the city council's approval, so that's an important part. Um, and eligible projects, I think the next slide has a more detailed list. We're generally talking about infrastructure. Infrastructure with a pretty broad definition. Um, certainly things like water, sewer roads, transportation, remediation of contaminated land. You can fund affordable housing, and then very importantly, they're now also authorized not just to fund the initial capital expenditure, but also the maintenance of facilities installed with the tool. You can click through, this is just some of those examples, I might just, uh, keep us going for time's sake, but infrastructure very broadly defined. The list is eighteen bullets in the law now. Legislature kind of adds a new one every year, based a little bit on what's topical. So now I've got broadband improvements to address climate change, so they've added wildfire prevention improvements, uh, extreme heat improvements, uh, spread of infectious diseases, improvements that address that. And then very importantly, most recently, facilities used by small businesses and nonprofits, that was added about a year and a half ago. The word by the, the list starts with, including but not limited to. Thank you. So why are cities and counties doing this? So, to be clear, cities are doing this on their own, counties are doing this on their own. And then what we think the best scenarios are, cities and counties doing this together. A lot of his return on investment, just sort of general fund basis, dollars and cents. If we do this thing, we're catalyzing growth that wouldn't happen otherwise, and the result of that growth is a net positive for the general fund. Aside from that, in various highly community, community can be about housing production, job creation. Many cases, it's just about solving infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. Uh, but number two, also worth highlighting, it's the ability to attract other money, and that comes in various forms. One very direct form is if a city is able to get a county to partner, kind of like an employer matching an employee's contribution or retirement account. That's a very direct way these districts can attract other money. But it's also about grants. There are sources at the state, especially the Housing and Community Development Department, the, uh, provider for, if you've heard the infill infrastructure grant, affordable housing and sustainable community grant, transformative climate communities grant. They have in their scoring rubric, you literally get more points on your grant application if you've got one of these districts in place. So it's, it's not only about the sort of tax increment itself, it's about trying to elevate the community's ability to attract other money. And then there's the private sector, it's the, it's the idea that, you know, there may be a group of private, um, property developers or one group even that, um, may only be willing to advance a project or extend a road or oversize a water main if there is a direct potential reimbursement mechanism like this, where they understand if they build their project, they create assessed property value, that creates funding capacity directly through this tool. That's a very direct path to potential reimbursement that we've seen a few times throughout the state as a way to, um, catalyze private sector investment. Just some examples, I'll keep moving for sake of time, but, you know, again, cities on their own, counties on their own, closest to us geographically, um, City of Fresno, couple of unincorporated County of Madera, and then most recently, City of Sanger here, here in Fresno County, uh, approved one of these districts in August. They're all so different. Let's talk about numbers, please. So we've run a number of scenarios. These are just benchmarks, obviously nothing at all is set in stone. We'd like to show you some numbers to, I don't know, give some concrete, um, findings on this. So we look at a variety of scenarios, each have, uh, sort of a varied level of the city exposure, how much the city is willing to allocate. And then we have, so A and B are just sort of, um, different levels of the city contributing. And C and D are partnership scenarios where, um, the county in some way matches what the city is contributing. Um, what we wanted to say, at least at a high level, is, okay, how many dollars are we talking about within five years? It depends on a number of factors, but to talk about a range between five and twenty million dollars within five years on dollars available to fund infrastructure. Within ten years, as assessed value grows, the capacity for this tool increases. Uh, so we're in then, in, within ten years, in the range of fifteen to sixty million dollars. Again, dollars for whatever the approved projects are within that plan, we've got to be quite specific about what the dollars would be spent on. And then the district can be, as mentioned, up to forty-five years from the first debt issuance. So for illustration, we often assume it takes time for value to grow. You may not be issuing debt for five years after these things are formed. So if there's a debt issue in year five, and you've got forty-five years after that, you've got a fifty-year lifetime maximum, it can be shorter if the city council so chose. So that range of funding capacity over that longer term is closer to, you know, twenty to se- seventy-five million dollars on, on a present value, sort of inflation adjusted basis, twenty to seventy-four million dollars. If we're not accounting for inflation, and we're just talking how many of today's dollars, as economists, we like to talk in present values, but in, in total nominal dollars for, um, economists in the crowd, uh, more on the range of a hundred to three hundred and sixty million. Doesn't really account for the value of a dollar in fifty years. That's why we don't spend, typically spend too much time on that far right column. So there's a lot here, and we understand this is the first time you're all seeing this, so we'll encourage you to, uh, continue to look at it and happy to address any questions. But the theme is lots of variables that we can toggle, how much the city allocates, over what time? Boundary, do you want to grow the boundary, shrink the boundary? Those are the primary factors. And what's driving the numbers is how much development are we actually able to catalyze within our boundary? Those are all sort of what feed into these projections, what we spend a lot of time evaluating. Lots of ways to use the money I mentioned earlier on, these can issue debt or issue bonds, they're, they're not required to. Uh, there are different ways of doing that, with different levels of, again, exposure for the general fund. Um, you know, there are trade-offs, like how soon you get the money, what, you know, what's the worst case impact on the general fund if things go bad? And one of the benefits of these are, it's a separate legal entity, so these can be formulated in a way that if the district, you know, somehow, again, extreme talking here, but somehow goes bankrupt, the city general fund is actually not on the line at all, because it's a separate entity with a separate revenue stream, and there's no, uh, general fund credit pledge or any assets of the city at risk. Um, so for many reasons, from a finance perspective, sometimes this is more desirable. The downside of that, if you could imagine going out for like an auto loan versus a mortgage, there's no security, you're paying a higher interest rate on that type of debt than you are with something like a general obligation bond. So trade-offs that we just like to be very transparent about. And then there are other alternatives, I mentioned earlier, the last bullet point, um, in some cir- circumstances, we are able to find private sector partners who are perhaps willing to serve as the bank. They may be willing to advance, again, um, oversizing of a water main or extending a road that they wouldn't otherwise be comfortable doing, but because of this long-term commitment of funding that is directly connected to their property being developed, this may, um, serve as just a reimbursement source, maybe never issuing debt at all, just reimbursing, let's say, a private sector developer, a group of developers that are willing to come together and advance some infrastructure, just one of the uses that's worked well elsewhere. So, um, we didn't spend too much time on CFD, it was also a part of our analysis, so, uh, just to clarify a few things. So the CFD is folks maybe more familiar with, because it's been utilized more, EIFDs are only around since twenty fourteen, CFD is around for forever. Um, we do look in our analysis of what that means. CFDs do indeed require a new special tax being assigned on a property owner's bill. It's a whole separate process when you're talking about a new tax, but what we've seen across the state is sometimes these work well together. If there are a group of, let's say, residential developers that are willing to do these CFDs, which in many cases they are, um, it can be bundled with an EIFD, such that as the EIFD revenue grows, it can be credited against the CFD special tax, reducing the special tax burden. And that has worked quite well in getting the private sector be willing to serve as that near-term bridge of dollars to start to get some infrastructure in the ground, and the EIFD can come in and, uh, reimburse partially or in whole. In high-level numbers, um, again, for the EIFD or the tax increment financing, there was a range in the city-only scenario of twenty to forty million approximately. Uh, with a county partnership, that increases on the order of forty to seventy-four million. The CFD can be done either completely on its own, sort of in parallel, or it can be bundled. We were, um, went through a variety of scenarios that amount to approximately forty-four to eighty-eight million dollars in funding capacity. Again, that requires, by the way, two-thirds property owner approval for CFD. And then we went through a series of grants, th- this presentation tonight is sort of a high-level summary of a more detailed package. Um, but we went through, identified a series of grants, not to, you could talk, there's a lot of grants out there. We tried to focus on the grants that have direct relevance to the type of projects and infrastructure that we're talking about here in Selma, and so we identified a range of state and federal grants amounting to twenty to two hundred and sixty-five million. It's a lot of dollars, but as everyone knows, grants are never a guarantee, very competitive, especially at the state level, certainly at the federal level. Um, but we often say, if you can elevate your priority for those with something like a taxing increment financing district, it makes sense to pursue in parallel. So return on investment, last portion of our presentation is just what's in it for the city. Why, why bother doing any of this? Lots of ways to look at it, as hinted at earlier, it's about facilitating housing development. Um, we also ran the numbers on potential job creation from kind of two perspectives. One is just the temporary construction period from just, you know, building the homes or the commercial development and what that means in terms of jobs and wages. And then we also look at, okay, once this is all built out, you know, what's sort of permanent, direct job, uh, within, you know, commercial development, like retail, industrial, and then what are the sort of indirect and induced? So lots of numbers in our analysis, but we're talking about thousands of jobs, both on a construction temporary basis. Those are also permanent, ongoing basis. The last bullet is oftentimes the most important when we talk about in a, in a discussion like this, city council, what does it mean to my general fund? So we ran an analysis of general fund impact, so if we can catalyze development, great, we get new homes, new commercial, new residents, new employees, great, right? New property taxes, sales taxes. But we also have to be fully cognizant, we're also having to provide services to those new individuals, public safety, community services, public works. So we do sort of a more comprehensive analysis of what's the total revenue amount? And what if we're actually carving out a piece of that through this tool and allocating a piece of those future property taxes away from the general fund and into the special purpose fund? And then further, netting out those cost impacts, the police, the fire, et cetera, what's the sort of net, 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 net sort of bottom line here? And we're saying that, sort of, this informed how we carved those scenarios we showed earlier. There's a very positive strategic play here, um, delivering a net fiscal impact of thirteen million to the general fund. Actually doing this, that's thirteen million, more positive in doing something like an EIFD versus the no EIFD scenario, where perhaps, there's probably still gonna be some development. Our analysis doesn't assume nothing happens if you don't do this, but we try to be legitimate and say, it's something, but perhaps it's slower. Perhaps it's less intense than would happen otherwise. So we, um, try to create some defensible scenarios around that. You know, we were showing a, a more positive scenario for the general fund, implementing this tool. So what's the roadmap for? There's a lot of detail here, um, maybe what we'll just say verbally is, as mentioned, there are a series of public meetings and hearings. Tonight is not a decision point, uh, really questions, concerns. For us to come back, if there are concerns, it's sort of our job to address it for you. Uh, the first action that would be formally brought to you is a resolution of intention. Uh the first action that would be formally brought to you is a resolution of intention, it's under letter C here. It's actually still a non-binding action, but it's it's very important because it's the action that officially starts the formation process. For one of these districts, it's the action that um says, okay. You're gonna have to actually go ahead and put together that detailed plan that you promised us, that says what exactly you're gonna pay for, what, you know, how many dollars over what time period? And then it's that plan that has to be vetted over that series of public meetings and hearings that were mentioned earlier. If this were to move forward at all, we have the timeline culminating in summer of twenty twenty-three for formation of one of these districts, if that were the council's desire. Again, with all those um meetings and hearings considered. And we sort of building in some time in the nearer term, if it's a, was there any objections to potential conversations with the county about partnership? I think that leads us to our last slide here with sort of immediate next steps. Most importantly, hear your questions, any concerns, get any high-level feedback, understanding it's the first time you heard much of this detail, not all of it. Um if there are no um objections to the plan, we would um seek or perhaps staff would seek authorization to. Discuss with the county as a potential partner, to see if there's any interest at all. Yeah, see if there's, if it's worth spending the city's time and having those conversations further. And then beyond that, it would potentially be bringing back to you that that resolution of intention at some time, if this were something of interest to you. So thank you for sitting through that step, and I would love to address your questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Stephanie?
Joseph, I have it, Joseph, right?
Yes.
I have a quick question. You explained at the beginning of the meeting. That it wouldn't be an additional tax on the uh on the citizens, like property taxes. So what you're saying is it's a percentage that normally goes into the general fund. And we're saying, okay, instead of allocating a hundred percent that goes into the general fund, you're saying we're gonna probably use. Ten percent that goes into the special fund. Um I'm I'm just throwing numbers up, I'm not sure, but. That fund would be separate, uh strictly just for this program here. And it would be used for the infrastructure, is what you're saying. It can't be used for anything else.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. It's an encumbrance, it's a legitimate encumbrance, it's a big deal to think about something like this.
But.
It's no portion of today's dollars, I think, I think you covered that, but some piece of future dollars that would not go to the general fund, but instead go here.
Okay, then my my next question is. I didn't get to see the cities that were part or already participating. What I'd like to see is what surrounding cities near us is already doing this. And separately, which ones are with the county and which ones are doing it on their own, and how successful are they? I mean, because I'll be honest, I mean, we get complaints all the time. And there's part of the city that's not part of city limits, it's part of county. And when issues come up, we count, we tell them, you gotta call Buddy Mendez, he's our board supervisor. And when they do, especially, things don't happen, you know, it's unfortunate. But there's some issues that we do have, especially over, it's a pocket. Towards the west side, I would say, probably northwest, and they don't even have sidewalks. So I'm just saying, you know, this is issues that you that come up. When you're partnering with the county, I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying sometimes. We hear it over and over, and I've been on here for four years. And those are the same complaints when I first got on, and I've been here four years, and it's still the same complaint. I mean, he's, you've been on there longer and you've probably still been hearing the same complaints, tha- that's just what I'm saying.
I'm clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, closest ones geographically, um city of Fresno, city of Sanger, both on their own, without the county, both just as the city. Fresno and Sanger, um county of Fresno was just evaluating, not fully formed yet, um one. In uh just southeast of the city of Fresno, kind of an industrial-focused EIFD. Um we've got two formed in unincorporated county of Madera, the Riverstone and Sorobio Master Plan Communities. Again, counties on their own, because it's on um. Uh unincorporated area, to get to the closest city-county partnership, we've probably got to go north. To um county of San Joaquin, we've actually got um Stockton, Lathrop, Manteca, and the county. Of San Joaquin partnering on some regional flood control, that's sort of all those communities um came together and realized. They're all in this dangerous flood plain, they've got to come together and resolve the infrastructure. Um I will say, instead of, so the city-county examples in Southern California, that strategy you mentioned, when you're talking about benefiting. Sort of unincorporated pockets along the periphery, was a huge part of the pitch. Because um it was clearly beneficial, because city gets a lot of those calls, even though they're for the county. County wants to help those areas anyway, but they hadn't had a sort of a direct focus on it through any type of funding mechanism. And so like in Palmdale, including both pockets of unincorporated and incorporated areas, was a great way to get the county interested in partnering.
Joe, I have I have a question there. You guys have given us a good presentation in the past couple of months in regards to where we're at and what we're doing, but um. Can you elaborate a little more? Because it got me really excited, because I've been doing a lot of analysis here in Selma and understanding the growth. Of what the vacant land and the potential land of what the amount of the, where the amount of money we're losing because we're not able. To go to that land, and you actually said that, you know, there's a percentage of land that hasn't been tapped into. But people look at it and don't understand the value of what it could produce when it's actually, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Of course, could we go up a few slides to the map of the opportunity sites? Yeah, please, thank you. So the the ratio that we were talking about was sort of, how much of your city does it, is this mean in terms of acreage? And how much does it mean in terms of your assessed value? And so when we see twelve percent of your acreage, but only four percent of your value. You you know, citywide would be the same percentage of acreage and value, instead of citywide average would mean if something is, you know, twelve percent of your acres, it would be twelve percent of your value. So what it kind of tells us is it's undervalued, largely vacant or otherwise significantly underutilized. So that's just on sort of what's existing there today. What I unfortunately don't have is our evaluations of new development, which um believe it or not, I I believe it was in billions. Um so when we we quantified. All the potential new units of residential, some square footage of industrial. We got into the billions of dollars, not immediately, not over time, we're talking about over the course of like twenty, twenty-five years. That we think some of it would happen anyway.
Even if you took a percentage of that growth.
Right, what we normally say when we run our sort of EIFD versus no EIFD scenario, we're gonna say, you know. A lot of it, maybe seventy-five percent of that future potential can be realized with EIFD, but maybe twenty-five percent can be realized. Without it, but just that gap, that difference of 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 fifty percent between the non-EIFD scenario and the EIFD scenario. What it delivers in what we showed is at least thirteen million in net benefit to the city general fund.
And you guys have that analysis, you guys actually ran it through, did you run also an impact in that that regard to, I mean, did you get that for? If 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 it actually takes twenty-five percent, this is what is going to impact the city down the road, because it's, it's, we call it vision, right? We're visionary, looking at what the proposed, the proposed of our city is gonna be in the net future, future. But what the question I have, if you have those analysis, those are very important, because that's actually a good outlook for our future growth.
I, yeah, I apologize for not, but but.
That's okay, that's okay, I know that you weren't thinking we're gonna. I I'd love to see that, I'm I'm a visionary and I want to see, I I love those touch points.
We 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 require, so the law requires that you run that impact analysis for at least the full lifetime of the district.
Good.
So we'd run it for fifty years, and we do both scenarios, a sort of catalyzed scenario versus the non-catalyzed scenario. And uh so we're required to do it, it's not in this short presentation, but we'll absolutely give it to you.
Yeah, thank you, that.
Fernando and his team who who us um the areas to study, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um the areas that we focused on were very strategically done by Fernando and his team.
Okay, good.
They were, we have very specific number of units, number of hotel rooms to be um constructed. And one thing they seem to understand more than sometimes others do at the beginning of this process is. They're very specific to not include areas that are already built out, that don't provide you growth opportunity. So that's why I think there's such a a big disparity, because he really keyed in on not only realistic projects like Selma Crossing. But areas that are really already eyed for development and are not now.
Really, it's really good for the visionary part, but but that was my question, I thank you for elaborating that, because it really excited me, so thank you.
Thank you so much for that great presentation. I um first heard of EIFDs when I first got on on council. And so I started investigating, like, what is it, what can we do, what do we have to do? And so this is, remind me, this is the one that we we had to get that bill passed. Just recently, so I, that just was so exciting to me, um to be able to do this, because I did talk to a couple of developers um about. EIFDs and what they, you know, potential and things, so I'm really excited about this. Um and and again, you know, council member Trillo mentioned visionary, you know, had we had this in place. In twenty fourteen, we probably would have been, you know, a lot further in our development, right? I mean, I know it was twenty fourteen was barely starting, but I mean, it's just basically like starting it a lot sooner than we are today. I think we would have been a lot, you know, more um further ahead, right? But I I'm really excited about all of this um information and the analysis and. And again, um I did sit through a a presentation that your company did in Sacramento. So I was, you know, all ears and just taking all kinds of notes, and so I'm really excited, and this actually helped me to understand it even better. So I thank you for the great presentation.
Okay, you know, um back in two thousand and fourteen, we started RDAs, and this was. These are kind of the, this is the offspring of RDAs, as I understand what you said. And uh we had an issue with our successor agency, because, you know, we had administration that. Put land, they took it right from the RDA and put it in the city, rather than putting in the successor agency, which barred us. From being able to do cool things like an EI, EIFD. And I appreciate your answering that, why you just wouldn't cast, pick the whole city on EIFD, because there's no downside, right? There's no economic issue there, but it's because the value is already built out in some of those areas. So this is all about potential, you can talk about vision and all that stuff, that's great. But you're talking about potential for economic growth and economic impact. And I guess the question that came to my mind when you were talking is. Um the, could you have? You know, the big thing is the sewer, the twenty million dollar price tag to to upgrade the sewer line. To put all this home, all this residential that some of the council members want to see, and quite frankly, a lot of the community want to see. Do you, would it be a potential for the developers to take an EIFD, which would comprise where the sewer lines would go? Where the existing lift stations are, and then say, you you put them in, right? And then that increases the value of that land. The taxable value, the city gets the greater, you know, property tax for that, I would assume. And then pay those developers back for their investment with that. Twenty-five, could you do more than twenty-five percent, or are you limited to how much of that property tax you could use to pay back the developers?
You could do more, yeah, what you just outlined is a very realistic scenario that has been implemented elsewhere. Where they advance it, and they're the, the bank is the term I use, I don't know if it's the best term, where they're the ones willing to front that money, they're the, they're the loan, the seed money. And we repay that back with this tool, so absolutely, that's a mechanism that works great, there's no cap. We ran twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent as scenarios, you can go up to a hundred percent. Our limiter, our sort of self-limiter is for every one of those scenarios we ran. We also ran the corresponding impact on the general fund on a net fiscal basis. And we try to do it very conservatively, we try to be very conservative about, you know, how much each new, you know, city employee will cost to provide those. Uh public safety, community services, public works, and when we started getting above fifty percent, we were really diminishing that net. Impact with those conservative assumptions, so our sort of objective feedback to you is, you know. Perhaps consider fifty percent. Um as a, what we would say is a conservative cap, going above that, yes, we can be more catalytic. But that real return on a dollars and cents basis will start to diminish.
You're squeezing that out, the higher you go with that percentage, is that right?
Yeah.
The return. Okay, I get it, sounds interesting for our first step. I have other questions, but I think we'll probably get to them in the next um presentation. Does anybody else have any, anybody from the public have any questions or issues? Okay, do we have anybody on the line? Anybody on Zoom?
Louis Franco, ten sixty-four Mill Street, it's not really a question, but I did you ask earlier if the presentation was going to be provided to council, I was wondering. You would consider putting it on the website for the public, could look at it as well?
That's a great idea.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And additionally, we will um provide the full analysis that Cosmont did um and distribute it to council.
Like to learn more details, this is a great overview, but I'd like to see more of the details on the return. And and how it's been the scenarios, how it's been done, and the values and stuff like that.
And if I may, uh mayor. Uh Joe did a good job of presenting the next steps and sort of a timeline of this process, if it was, if it moved forward. And our intention is to, after having conversations with the county, I think that was a great point that you made, council member Guerra. About having a discussion about those unincorporated areas and including those. Um you know, for any infrastructure improvements that are made with with this potential funding. Um we will have to engage them, um hopefully, we're hoping within um the next month or so. Um sort of concurrent with the sales tax MOU um discussion. And so that timeline lends itself well to bring back either in um in our meeting in January or our first meeting in February. A resolution of intention.
Excuse me, Sam Andrew, tax sharing?
Tax sharing MOU.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Does he sell some, okay, so our tax sharing MOU um. And so uh but we don't actually need to have a firm commitment from the county to 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 start the process. Of the forming EIFD, they can, actually, I think it probably simplifies the process to add them later. Uh because there might be, you know, things on their end that might slow us down. Uh but it it doesn't hurt us to start those discussions early on as we're forming the district. So our our goal is to come back in January or February with the resolution, resolution.
Probably a good resource too, because, you know, they've been there, done that, they've looked at this before, looked at in some details. The administrator officer, Merlin, could be really helpful on that too.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, so we'll see you in January. Thank you very much for coming out, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Stephanie.
That will move on to our next item, which is a consideration of a resolution approving a request for a fee waiver for the Selma Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Rob Terry, deputy city manager. Uh what we have before us today is a request from the Chamber of Commerce to waive all fees associated with the Christmas Parade event. Um the, all of the fees associated with this event include the special event permit, the sound permit, street closure permit, and the barricade rentals. The total for that is two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, um that's all listed out in the staff report, they're broken down by category. The event itself is scheduled for Saturday, December third, from three P M to nine P M. Uh attachment one within the staff report contains more details about the event boundaries. The anticipated number of attendees and all other relevant details associated with the process. Um the city on the fiscal impact, of course, would forego all of the application fees that are associated with the event, which totaled at two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Revenues for these activities were not uh anticipated within the fiscal year twenty two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, which is normal. For those items that in the past have been requested for a fee waiver, so we don't anticipate that they're going to be revenues. Because we anticipate a fee waiver request coming forward on those items. Um so just wanted to make sure that that was, that was pointed out there. Staff is recommending that the council approve the fee waiver request that was submitted by the chamber for the Christmas parade. That concludes my presentation, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very much, any questions for deputy city manager Terry? Do we have any input from the public on this? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone? Okay, bringing it back. I'm all for it, just a question, do we start getting the financials from, financial reports from the chamber too, like legacy, boys and girls, and second chance?
Yes, those are coming in, and we do have a meeting scheduled with the Chamber of Commerce uh next week um to discuss those.
Great. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll call the roll, council member Guerra?
Yes.
Council member Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Council member Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Joe?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes, okay, we've been at it, a lot of data for an hour and five minutes, let's take a break and. Mayor Robertson, yes. Okay, we've been at it. A lot of data for an hour and five minutes. Let's take a break and come back at seven twelve. Session? We will move on to our next item, which is consideration of approval for design of city-owned sign located in the center median of the north side of Floral Avenue and Highland Avenue intersection. I believe it's the Rob Terry Show again.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry you're stuck with me. I know I've heard my voice on recording too and think I, I don't sound like that, do I? But unfortunately I do. Um, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Rob Terry, Deputy City Manager. Uh, the item before us tonight is for consideration of approval of the design of a city-owned sign located in the center median of the north side of Floral Avenue. Um, north side, excuse me, at the intersection of Floral Avenue and Highland Avenue. Um, so the picture that we have up on the screen right now shows the sign as it appears currently. Um, and then the next one here is what is being proposed to replace that sign. So the actual base, the brick, everything of the sign, of course, is to remain the same. Um, it doesn't show really well on the, on the screen here, unfortunately. But the, uh, the background of the sign does still maintain that wood grain look, um, that is found on the current sign. Um, so it is consistent. It just simply changes it from saying Selma Auto Mall to welcome to Selma. So that it's more of a gateway type of item in, into the city. Um, prior to my time here, this had been talked about at the city council back on October eighteenth of two thousand twenty-one. The council at that time did vote in favor of updating the existing city sign and had directed staff to work with Mr. Dwight Nelson, who was the party that had, uh, originally approached the city about the update and offered to pay for the update as well. Um, to work together with Mr. Nelson on a design that was, um, deemed appropriate and then to bring back for council's consideration. So that's where we are here tonight. Staff is recommending that the city council approve a resolution that would approve the proposed design and that would direct staff to work with the funder and contractor or vendor as appropriate to complete the sign upgrading process. So I complete staff's report. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks very much. Does council have any questions for Deputy City Manager Terry?
I do, Rob. Is this the only sign that, that they showed you? I mean, they didn't give you any other samples?
They, they did actually have some. I'll let the city manager touch on that because, uh, this is a project that was started, uh, by him. Uh, and so I, there was more communication before I came on board.
Okay.
We, we went through quite a few iterations of the sign design. Um, I, I think if you recall, originally, Mr. Nelson wanted to put Selma Auto Mall with the directional arrow and then a Farni Automotive Group with the directional arrow going the other way. Well, the Farnys, um, you know, were opposed to that, so the best compromise was just to not have anybody's name on it and just, um, but in terms of the design, you know, we went back and forth several times with the, with the print shop, with Mr. Nelson's group. And, uh, this is kind of the, the final, um, revision that, that we came up with. You know, it incorporates the, the, you know, grape and, and raisin, um, theme, but also keeps the, uh, the wood grain design. But, you know, if council, and we're not paying for it, so, but we do want something really nice out there that kind of, um, maintains the existing aesthetic. So, but we're open to feedback, absolutely.
I mean, me personally, I would have liked to seen something just a little nicer, you know? Cause you really can't see, I mean, the, the writings are all different, you know, the, the, you got welcome, that's a smaller, the two is like handwritten and then Selma's like blocked. I mean, that, that's just me.
We, we can go back and ask them to make them more uniform. If we, if we did Selma the same size as the welcome and just kept the two sort of script or how, how are you proposing? I think they wanted, the goal was for them to make Selma the most prominent part of that, but we can,
Right.
we can change it.
Were, were there bids on this?
No, um,
Just design it?
Yeah, I think it's a very, I think it, the cost is in the fifteen hundred dollar range for the signs.
Including the installation?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be Public Works.
Yeah, it could be Public Works or the sign company itself.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be white.
Exactly. With the trim of gold.
Yeah.
Are the raisins gonna, is it gonna be white or is that gonna be all colorful like the other?
It's gonna be exactly as it shows on that, uh, rendering there.
Yeah, everything was proposed to be white lettering and white graphic.
A little more, uh, identifiable.
Yeah.
Discernible.
Doesn't mean it can't, it can't be, we can't propose some new effects. And thi- this is why we brought it to council, because.
In my own opinion, can we propose that the letter turns gold like the other one is? And the grape turns with colorful, so it can look color? And if, and that's just me speaking, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, but we can't have a sign that has just white. I'm just.
Or an outline, you know?
Like a trim? Like a gold trim? Okay.
Gold trim, because the other one on, on Second Street has gold and has colorful.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, and then we have to pay.
Remember when we had Public Works come a couple of years ago, they had signs that they were proposing. They were pretty cool. There's some of the, yeah, for the second street entrance, those were kind of interesting, little, the design variations on it. That is just a little, it's a little vanilla, literally, right? All white, you know, maybe.
Much appreciated that they want to donate the sign, but I think the community would love to see some color.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not wanting to pick the color, but I think that a white was.
I think the, the sign company could come up with something more colorful. And then as far as the font size, what's good, Councilmember Guerra?
I, I was just gonna say, because, um, you, you want, like you said, to, to have Selma stand out and the combination of the fonts, because it looks like welcome and Selma are the same font. It just looks like Selma is bigger because we're trying to make Selma stand out. And then the two with the, you know, a different type of a font, um, is, is, that, that's a good.
Contrast.
Combination, yeah, it just catches.
The color.
It, it just catches your eye, but yeah, if you have maybe like an outline, I think would be nice.
There'd be lighting to go with it?
There is a light that points up to the sign that's installed in the, in the base of the sign right now.
Both sides or one side?
Kind of uplighting.
Both sides, yeah. I, I drove past it just to ensure, um, late the other night and there is lighting on both sides.
So obviously there's power there.
There is.
Okay, that's good. It's a good sign. Maybe jazz up the lighting a little bit and, uh.
Yeah, I think they replaced that actually, uh, two years ago. They made some improvements to that sign.
Lighting, yeah. Like the veterans park, they had lighting out there, jazzed it up a bit.
Even like the neon sign or, I mean, like a light.
Yeah. Just give it a little more color.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Sounds good. Anybody from the public want to weigh in on the sign? They, whether they like it or not, any suggestions? Anybody online, on the phone, not watching the Niners? No? All right, bring it back. All right, so we're, I think we're good on this.
So, uh, SAP would be, um, requesting approval of the design with the requested elements by council. Um, so that we can get back to the sign company, make those changes and then go, move forward with installation.
Is there a motion to approve the sign with those elements added in?
I'm a promotion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Joe?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Robertson, yes. Okay, item five, approve a maintenance agreement. Well, it could be approved or disapproved of a maintenance agreement with surveillance integration of current surveillance camera program within the city of Selma.
That'd be me, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a, uh, request to approve a maintenance agreement with surveillance, uh, integration for, uh, maintenance of our camera surveillance system. This is really loud. Okay, can you hear me okay still?
Really.
Okay, so, um, obviously, uh, the city has recognized the importance of having cameras surveillance system programmed throughout the, in the high traffic areas as well as, uh, some other city-owned property and other areas in the syst-, uh, city that assist, uh, our detectives and police officers with, uh, investigating complex, uh, crimes and obtaining data uh, to ensure, uh, good and, um, prosecutable cases uh, when we have significant incidents here in the city of Selma. Um, we, the city, uh, surveillance integration is a, a regional, uh, company that also, uh, has helped facilitate implement and, uh, design our camera surveillance integration, uh, program. As well as they have also helped a lot of the surrounding cities in Fresno County, especially in our region, uh, cities such as Parley or Orange Cove, Sanger, with the same, uh, or, uh, with the, uh, a system which is called a Vigilon. A Vigilon is also a, uh, camera system that is used, uh, throughout the state of California and is highly recognized as a, uh, premium system. Currently, we do not have a maintenance agreement for our s- camera system and we are looking to, uh, reconnect or reinstitute a maintenance agreement with surveillance integration to provide and ensure that our cam- current camera system is up and running efficiently to help ensure that, uh, we have successful investigations.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief at this point regarding the Vigilon system?
Chief, who did we have it with before?
We, we had it with Surveillance Integration.
Okay.
We just, uh, that contract expired, I believe it was two thousand nineteen, so we're just looking to, uh, get it back, uh, renewed, if you will.
Will this company have anything to do with the, um, body cams? Could we, could we put it with that that you're researching right now?
Uh, no, that, that would be a completely different.
Different vendor?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And a different, different system to back it up and all that stuff?
Correct, correct.
And then, um, in terms of the, this system, when they sell the city the cameras, what do you get? Like twelve months of warranty, if that? Is that long gone?
No, that, I, with, with the purchase of any new, uh, equipment, there's, there's a certain warranty. I don't know exactly what that warranty is. I'll be honest, I apologize. Uh, but typically, uh, because our sil- system is so robust, at one point, we will get to a more holistic, uh, warranty or maintenance agreement. Uh, we're just, I think we're kind of probably on the cusp of getting to that, uh, because our system is a little bit older. Uh, and the benefit of having a, um, surveillance integration, uh, continue the maintenance agreement is, and a great example is, let's say we have a camera that was purchased three to four years ago and let's, and please don't hold me because I'm not a big techie guy, uh, but the three zoom camera is, uh, goes bad or does not operate, we get, uh, we get a five zoom camera, uh, so we get better technology for, which is covered within the maintenance agreement. So that's one of the benefits of having a, uh, the, the company that really kind of helped design and build out our system.
Makes sense. And then if there's physical damage, that would be an insurance claim, because it says they're not covering some acts of God on this. They're covering like equipment breakdown?
Correct.
Okay.
A- and, and, uh, again, because they are local, we get a better response, I believe. And we have invested quite a bit into this system already, uh, to go and change a different vendor than have to look at what the cost would be for, uh, improvements or warranty coverages, if, if at all.
From Trillo?
Yep, uh, you know, this is a total, uh, separate issue in regards to this issue, but pertains to this. Have, are we, uh, are you analyzing the cameras we have now? And, and me, maybe bringing back to our next budget, adding more surveillance camera?
Absolutely. I, what I'll say is we definitely, uh, plan on expanding our system with purchases from the city. Uh, additionally, as we are starting to look at new developments within the city, we are starting to, uh, add conditionals, uh, conditions of, of use permits or requests, requirements rather. Uh, so they too will also help enhance that system as well. Uh, thus the importance of trying to get this, uh, maintenance agreement, um, approved.
Yeah, adding, adding into our, into our template list of conditions of approval, in particular for. Commercial and industrial areas, there will be requirement for placement of, of cameras or if they're near major intersections, um, you know, fees. That would be fair share cost be associated for these type of items that are overall public safety related.
I have one more question, Chief, do we have any issues with their cameras currently?
Uh, yeah, ab- absolutely, we do, so, um, it, it's like every other piece of. Equipment like much as our internet and things of that nature, we're constantly having issues, uh, it's just, it's equipment, it there. So, uh, but Surveillance Integration does a, a great job of responding to us. However, um, they have customers and just like any, anything else, uh, we're not currently not under contract. So, when we're get, when we get under contract, we kinda get that priority as well, which is what we're looking to, uh, enhance.
Discounted rate on, on cameras, when we need to replace them, is that right, without them breaking down?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Discounted rate on cameras in the future?
I, I would, I, you know, I, I can't speak for Surveillance Integration, but I'm sure that if we have a maintenance agreement with them. Uh, it helps, uh, because we're already part of the family, if you will. Additionally, if, I apologize, but just to kind of speak to that, let's say we have a camera at, let's say, Florlin Highland. Which I don't believe we have a camera at this point, but let's say Florlin Wright, um. If we replace that camera, they're very familiar, let's say we go from a, the pan tilt zoom. System into an LPR, they're very familiar with that, that location, what. Uh, infrastructure is currently there and how we can more efficiently improve that location with the newer technology. That would be more beneficial to us, as opposed to having someone come in that is not familiar with our system. And now has to, we have, basically have to reinvent the wheel, if you will.
Got it, and they got good, good marks from, good reviews from Parley or Orange Cove and, and Sanger?
Absolutely, they're very highly respected in, in the, in Fresno County.
I just have one more question, I know you're probably not gonna be able to answer it, but why would we let our contract expire?
I don't think anybody here was, uh, here at that time with the city when our contract expired, I think two thousand nineteen is when, um, it expired. So I, we can't, we couldn't answer that.
We probably knew when those bills started rolling in to fix the cameras, of course, that means agreement. Okay, do we have any comments from the public? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone? Okay.
Hello? Caller, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. Selena Martinez. Hmm, hello?
Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you, I'm sorry.
We can hear you.
Okay, great, um, yeah, I just had a question of what the budget is or the.
Can you, can you just identify yourself just for process?
Uh, my name is Selena Martinez, Mac.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just had a question about how much, um, I guess this new contract will cost and. I didn't quite get the details, I'm not sure if they're written somewhere of how many cameras and the locations and that's gonna be posted to the public.
Thank you, Chief Al Chris.
My apologies, the, uh, maintenance agreement is approximately forty seven thousand fifty one dollars and fifty six cents for this fiscal year. Of which we have already budgeted and approved, uh, for forty seven thousand dollars within this fiscal year, um. The cameras are, we think we have well over one hundred cameras in the city of Selma. And I don't know that we have them posted anywhere, they're pretty identifiable though at the intersections. Uh, also, we have, uh. City property that is also encompassed within those numbers, so I don't have an exact, uh, number right off the top of my head. But it's, I, I, I wanna say more. More definitive, about a hundred and twenty-five cameras, um. And I, I don't know that we haven't, we would post them throughout the city, that would be, uh, something we'd have to look into.
Is there a legal requirement to post? That it, they're there?
Mayor, not, not that I know of, um, however, if there is a map with the locations of the cameras. And a public requir-, uh, record request is made, the city would have a duty to figure out if that is disclosable. Um, and likely it would be if the document already existed.
Got it, thank you. Ms. Martinez, do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, I was just curious if the cameras, um, do just pictures or video or both?
Uh, currently, our cameras are only video, so we have to go back and look at, uh, reviewing them if we need more, uh. Definitive information.
Got it. And. I, I, my other question, sorry, is. How much crime is prevented when you have all this video footage with, um, and cameras available to the public? One, before the, uh, before the update and if it's gonna be updated?
You know, I, I don't know that we can quantify what, what, what crime was actually prevented, uh, due to the. Uh, camera system, and I don't know with this, as this system was built in two thousand fourteen, at least it was begun in two thousand and fourteen. And there have been significant improvements, uh, to the system, uh, as well as the city's growth. That, that'd be a very difficult, uh, number to quantify, I believe. However, I, I can say that the, these, uh, this system is assisted in homicide investigations. Uh, which are crucial to have that kind of, uh, to get those investigatory leads, um. When we, when we go to critical incidents such as that.
Chief, is the school district? Do they have the same camera provider for the cameras they have on the campus, their school campuses?
I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, I, I do not know.
Okay.
However, I do know that Surveillance Integration works with many school systems, uh, in the county.
Thank you. Martinez, anything else?
Um, yeah, no, just, uh, follow up on that, I guess if you do upgrade the surveillance system throughout the city, is that. Something you're able to quantify in the future? Of how much crime, I guess, is prevented or not prevented and how much that system helps you?
Quantifying what crimes were reduced would be extremely difficult to do, I, I don't know that that's possible.
Got it.
You know, I, I can just say that, uh, the system has proven to be successful, uh, in the past, uh, critical incidents and investigations.
In, in the past, we've had reports from police chiefs about crime statistics though. And you could see and they, they're reported on an annual basis, I don't know if you could impute them to a. Particular cause, but.
Exactly, reduce this many crimes or.
At least you'll know whether they go up or down, right?
Right.
Exactly, and, and to, to add to that, Selena, is, um, the cameras are just one tool. Uh, we have, we use a multitude of different tools as well as how we direct resources that also aid in crime reduction and crime prevention. So, and, and crime could go up, uh. Yeah, I mean, as, as the population increases as well, so, you know, the, the. That, that's a difficult, difficult number to quantify.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just have a quick question too, I think if we can just get those reports. Like we used to in the past, I think that would make a big difference because those are, um, really important. Reports and, and our citizens do wanna see that our crime is going down or up, you know, so. If maybe we can, um, get those reports back, that, that'd be a great idea.
I think, I think we can, um, the chief and I can work together to, uh, find a way during, uh, the departmental updates. To, to provide statistics, um, you know, because, you know, there, there's a. There's some information that we, we just were not able to provide to the public, but absolutely, I think we can dis- disclose general statistics. Um, you know, and to the caller's question, I think it's just impossible to know what crimes did not happen because of cameras. Um, but I think in general, crime statistics are very reportable, yeah.
Miss, she's still on, Ms. Martinez? No, okay. And I think that would be good to have, um, statistics, I know with COVID and all that, it's been tough to get that, those statistics together, but in the past, we've had reports. Just in general, you know, in Selma, the city of Selma, how many murders, you know, how many thefts, how many violent crimes, how many non-violent, just things like that. And they go, and they show comparisons of years, it's just good for people to be able to see that.
Absolutely, I'll work with the C N, city manager and get those statistics.
Alright, thanks for that. Right, do we have a motion, um, to approve this maintenance agreement with Surveillance Integration?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trieho?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes. Okay, item six. Consideration of Fresno COG Active Transportation Plan Cycle Six, application and amending of the city's active transportation plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Rob Terry, Deputy City Manager. The item before us today is, uh, actually two-part here, um, but both related to each other and we will be asking council to take. Two actions because we have two associated resolutions with it, um, but both of these are in. Um, linkage to the Active Transportation Plan Program, um, we are, uh, putting together an application. Um, for, for cycle six of the Fresno COG Active Transportation Program. In order to do that, we need to take action on our existing active transportation plan. To do an, an extension to a line that was earlier identified on it, of course, as the community has grown. Um, it makes sense for this extension to happen here and, um, to make sure that we're going to be more competitive for the project that we're looking to go for. Um, so, if we take a quick look at the graphic that we have here right now, you can see the, uh, the bold dashed line. Near the bottom right there is the extended area that we are proposing to add into the city of Selma Active Transportation Plan. That is an extension of a line that went all the way from where you can see where that large dash line is near the center of town there. And had gone all the way up to the northeastern portion of town, this simply just takes that same exact alignment. And continues it all the way down to where the current city limit line ends at Thompson Avenue. Um, you'll also note that this, this, uh, encompasses a portion of the area that we had talked about recently with the. Affordable housing development and a partnership with CID, um, so this is in collaboration with both CID. And the Affordable Housing Developer, they have both submitted letters of support for this active transportation grant, um, opportunity here. The dollars that were committed by the, the developer would be utilized if we're successful here, they would be utilized as seed money or match dollars. To be even more competitive with this grant process here, um, and then we would be looking to move forward with piping that canal. Um, from Thompson Avenue up to Valley View Street, so a very large portion of the extension area that we're looking at here. Um, and then placing an easement on top of it, doing the improvements, placing an easement to have a class one bikeway facility. That then links the future Thompson, um, Park site all the way up to, uh, to the Smart Center, so. We've got some, some great, um, vision and ideas there, um. The, the application that we're putting in is just over three million dollars, the total ask. Um, and that is based upon the, uh, engineer's estimate for, for what the project would be there. So what we, what we're looking at here first and foremost is to get council's approval to make this amendment while adding this, um. Extension of the alignment here to the city's active transportation plan and then, of course, getting council's support. Uh, for the submission of the Active Transportation Program Grant Application. Um, and that would, of course, include all of the details of the project that I had just spoken about there. So again, those are two different resolutions and so we would be asking council for two different, um, actions, uh, tonight. To take action on those items as appropriate, um, so that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
Council have any questions?
Um, just real quick, what was the amount that you said, the, the?
Three, three point two million was, was the engineer's estimate. But it's, it's a good chunk.
And the amount in that last contract that CID said was too low, that would actually be added to that amount. That, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do the underground piping and to do the easement, so it would all be put in that project? And would they have any matching, would they be putting any, um, skins in the game, would it just be the developer? Would it be CID?
CID, uh, CID would not be committing any funds to the project, it would be the, the developer, the in-kind funds or in, excuse me, payment in lieu. Um, those funds would be utilized as matched there, CID, of course, as an active partner and then the allowance to work with the city of. Piping the canal, placing an easement, um, which in, in all honesty, a lot of irrigation districts are not willing to have easements. On top of their infrastructure like that, so, um, to me, that's really where I see their skin in that game coming in is.
I see, their approval to allow that easement, that bike path to go over the, the ditch and, and then, uh. That three point two is a lot more than the buy-in from the developer, they don't have to match one point six million, right?
They, they do not, no, and that, that in-kind was just for the improvements that were identified within their conditions of approval. Which is just a small portion of the overall project, that if this were to be successful, would, would be done, I mean, maybe. One fifteenth in all honesty of, of the area of what the developer was looking at.
Got it, so it's gonna go way beyond that and.
Yeah, the, the alignment goes all the way from Thompson Avenue all the way up to Valley View and we were just talking about, you know, several hundred feet. Um, that, that the developer, uh, that their portion would have looked at there, so the dollars would still be. Or that project area would still be included within this overall project, which is why it would be appropriate. For there in lieu of dollars to be applied here as matching funds.
Does this solve the city's problem of keeping that water from the storm drains out of the canal? And fulfilling that recharge agreement obligation of the city to make sure that the city doesn't put any more money? Money, water, which is money, in the, um, in the canals from the storm drains, will that assist in that process?
It could, I mean, it, that wasn't, um, you know, specific intent of this, but I think there could be some benefit to that.
Okay, alright.
If, if nothing else, really, it's commitment to that continued partnership and I think so, it's in very positive direction.
Great, and then as a, uh, former coun- um, council of governments, um. Um, planner, Rob. Do you think this has a good chance, the city has a good chance for this ATP, getting this ATP grant?
I, I felt that the, that the application was very strong, um, there was a lot of concentration put in, of course, to the metric, to the scoring metric. Paying very specific attention to the type of items that were being asked, how they're being asked, how the scoring committee looks at those items, the history that I have. Of being engaged with scoring committees and what type of projects seem to be, um, very well supported and score well. And so, uh, we, we tried to take everything that we could and, and put that, that history and that understanding into the process and I do believe that we have. An application that is very strong.
And I will just add, the school district also submitted a letter of support for this project because this, it will become a, uh, safe route to school. Um, designated area, uh, because as we continue to build out the trail towards Abraham Lincoln Middle School, that's absolutely gonna be. A, a path that students take.
That's been a vision of the city for years and years to pave over those, the irrigation canals. And to put, make them, put them to use for the community as bike paths, so, uh, congratulations on that, thank you for, for doing that. Moving forward with this, anybody from the public?
I have a quick question.
And then Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Just quickly, has the application been submitted or, or when is it due?
The applications were actually due this past Friday, um, so they were submitted, I did reach out to Fresno COG staff and ensure that we could submit our application. With an unsigned resolution and then replace that with a signed resolution as appropriate in the days to come. They were completely okay with that, their turnaround time for this was actually very, very quick, so. They had, they had that question from multiple agencies and, and we were one that had asked that question as well.
Okay, and my next question is, who's the developer for this project?
Uh, Corporation for Better Housing is, is the, um, the, the developer that's adjacent, so that's where some of that partnership would come in, but it would actually be a city project.
Okay.
Member Mendoza Navarro?
I was just gonna say that, um, you know, I commend you guys for, for, um, getting this together because we just had the conversation with the ad hoc committee. And that was one of the thing, conversations that, or topics of conversations that came up, you know, that I mentioned with CID. Um, cause Fernando and I had had, or city manager and I had had these conversations about, you know, uh, bike trails and walking trails and things like that. Um, and this would be a, a perfect, you know, opportunity to, to, um, utilize those, um, canal. Easements, cause yeah, it's dangerous, I was driving to Home Depot yesterday and I seen this poor man going into one of the canals. Um, I don't know if he was gonna sleep in there or what, but, um, the other thing is I did, when it was summertime, when they released that water. I seen somebody bathing in there, so, you know, really covering these canals and using them, you know, like, having them have multi-use. I think is, is, is good, so I'm glad that CID's in support and also the developer, so, good job.
And, uh, working, I would just add to that, working with, um, with COG on the Measure C. To get that renewed, don't know where that's gonna end up for this cycle, but, uh, that, that is definitely an issue, very, very important. And, um, the Measure C, the Golden State Corridor project that's coming will incorporate the five-foot bike lanes too, which is gonna be good. It's gonna be part of the street, but it's gonna be. much, much better and safer than it was before. So I, I'd love to see the city working with COG like this on the creative projects and definitely, I will, I'll, I'll be our cheerleader at the, at the COG meetings, depending on the certification of the vote. So, great. Do we have any input from the, the public? Do we have anybody on the phone on Zoom like to weigh in on this? Okay. Bring the matter back to council. Is there a motion for the first and the second resolutions, or do we have to take either one? Do we have to take them both separately?
I, I think taking them separately for the recommendation.
Is there a motion to approve the amending of the city's Active Transportation Plan to extend the currently identified class one bikeway canal alignment improvements to extend the terminus of the canal at the southern city limit?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yeah.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes. Number two, is there a motion to approve the resolution supporting the submission of the cycle six Active Transportation Plan?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Councilmember Gera?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal? Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson, yes. Right. Staff report, City Manager?
Just a quick reminder to the community and the council that City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving Day. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Really just working with different departments, advising on different public records, questions. Each one is proving to be pretty unique, you know, depending on the department and what records are being requested, but obviously, that's an important task of the city to comply with that so that the public has confidence in knowing what is going on. So that, and then just working with the City Manager on a couple of development issues or projects going on.
Okay. Thank you for that, City Attorney. Deputy City Manager, Developmental Services.
Uh, nothing else to report. I was gonna say ditto because we're working so hard on so many of those items there, but no- nothing else specific to report, Mayor.
Okay. We don't have our, okay. Our.
Nothing.
Fire Captain Donovan, thank you. Police Chief Al Chris?
Uh, just to kind of add, our police department lobby will be closed on Thursday and Friday as well. And I'd like to just kind of recognize our police officers. This weekend, they recovered three firearms off the streets during some vehicle stops. So I just wanted to kind of thank them for their hard work. They're doing a great job out there. So.
And then with the holidays, Chief, gonna be people drinking and driving. Hopefully, we'll be out there watching.
Well, we definitely update you next council meeting.
So many, so many needless deaths from, from DUIs.
Our DUIs, we have had some substantial arrests on DUI arrests. So the guys are doing a phenomenal job working traffic, which then leads us to those kind of type of arrests as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Okay, you don't have Community Services. We'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
I just have a couple of things. One, I had mentioned already, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager and Deputy City Manager, we met as the Ad Hoc Committee for the Tax Sharing MOU. And so I just, you guys, I mean, I, I learned a lot from just, you know, that short meeting, but I'm really excited to, you know, move forward with that. And then I attended the Thanksgiving that Pastor Delphina Vasquez held over at the Smart Center on Saturday. I didn't really get to see, or I didn't get a count of how many families were out there, but there was a lot of people out there. So that was really nice. And then I just wanted to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay. Councilmember Treheal?
Uh, yes, I attended the Chamber Mixer. Congratulations to our staff, one of our staff members, for winning all that good jewelry. And I'd mention that. The next one is something that one of my res, one of my members in my district has been talking to me about, and he's a very long student resident here in our community. He's been asking, why can't we do, you know, why can't our staff get involved and be, you know, more involved? And just this morning, I witnessed at seven forty-five this morning, I was going on Dinuba and I witnessed one of our police officers pull over to the side of Dinuba and Bethel, no, Dinuba, and I'm sorry, what's our, where we're at here, by the, yeah, Dinuba call. He pulled over, walked across the street, took down a yard sign, yard sale sign, and he went to the next side and took out those yard sale signs. And a lot of, a lot of our community members have always said, you know, I have a saying in my business is that if you touch it, you own it because you all, you have ownership. So to the Chief of Police, I ask you and I tell you, I commend you for your staff. They're taking ownership of our community. They're cleaning up our community. It doesn't mean that, you know, just because you're a police officer, you don't go out there and you're, this is your job, you're squared off. No, these guys are taking ownership. I pulled them over and I told them, hey, man, thank you for doing what you're doing. Because when we start doing just the little things, taking ownership to touch something and you take ownership of it, it means a lot because you start cleaning up the area, people start seeing it. So for that, I want to commend you because it's your, actually, it's coming, it's funneling down to your, to your police officers. So for that, I want to commend you for that because I think this, and I want to commend all our staff for thinking that way. Also, our City Manager, because I think that it's getting out there. People are starting to work together, think, you know, we're having a positive mind of cleaning up our community. The third one is I have two requests. One of them is to put a, to start consideration and put in the agenda for a dog park on Orange Street. I know we have a ponding basin there, so I wanted, I want to propose that we put a dog park. I know a lot of people in my committee have been asking for it. We don't have a park, but if we get a dog park and start talking about how we can get grants and working on that is something that I like to place. Another one is, I like to see about budgeting also lights on the pickleball courts. Because of that, I have residents in my district that actually have a proposal from a light company, which I'd like to hand to you. And I think the city, we as a city, need to look at it and, and, and come back to the council. The next one is, I like an update, if not an update, not, not, I know staff is very limited in short, but I'd like to just keep in mind that there was a resident from my district asking for an open investigation into the second chance animal shelter. I'd like that report back to me. I also like for our City Attorney, it may, I understand you have a lot of community requests, X. Could we get a list of who, what, what, what they're asking for? Because I mean, us as council members, can we get that? Or is it, is it, is that a, I mean, it's, it's an open act.
That's a good question. Um, because I, I could answer for sure. I, I want to say yes, but.
Okay, but I'm just asking because, um, understanding the, what we, what we go through as a council and what we're going through, we started looking at how much, what's, what's actually costing us our financial money. It's money. And, and if we're, or get clarity of what they're asking for so we can make sure that we're more solvent and then we're more representing what they're asking for, what we can do as a council to be positive, and they won't ask that if we just present it. That's why I'm asking. I'm not wanting to know who's doing that. I just want to know what, what are the issues so we can clarify that and may be more transparent, be positive versus the negative. In that, I'd like to just tell everyone, I wish you Happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that everybody has a blessed, blessed day. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gera?
Okay. I had a pretty short week as well. I attended the Martin Jewelers Mixer, and that was a great event. And congratulations, Miriam, for the winning of the diamond earrings. That was, that was wonderful. And then the S K F meeting that we were supposed to have in November did get canceled. So we will probably have our next meeting in December, and that should, that's pretty much it for me.
Do you, Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Ah, yes, I did. I was in a Zoom meeting also on the MOU. I, I learned a lot. I was at the mixer also for Chamber. Last, last week, my Central Valley Lioness Lions Club and the Selma Kiwanis Club hosted Invite a Vet Night, Portuguese Hall. We saluted twenty-four veterans. It was really, really touching. They were from all branches, and now my youngest one, I think, he was, used to be my Leo. He's about twenty, I'd say about twenty-five, twenty-six. And then, of course, some of the older ones that's been around for years and years. So it was really neat to have a, you know, what a variety just to see, you know, say thank you for your service. So what we did is that with Kiwanis coming in, they gave us some extra money. So we gave each of the veteran a gift, gift card from our local restaurant. So it was like Sal's, Rodolfo, Cho's, Bax's, Rosalinda. So they appreciate that. That was a good thing. So this Wednesday, basically a day before Thanksgiving, we're getting all ready. Everything's in my walk-in. We carved sixteen turkeys yesterday, so we're ready to go. We'll probably deliver maybe about eighty meals to seniors that won't be able to come and pick it up. So a major portion is like LeBar Apartments and McCall, the mobile home out there. So we, there's extra meals. Is there anybody that knows of anybody who needs one? You're welcome to come. We start serving at eleven o'clock at the senior center. So you're welcome to come and pick up a meal. So we do have some extra meals there. So anybody you think should have one that don't have one would, you know, come and get it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I want to wish everybody, everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I did want to ask about the person who had their car towed mistakenly by PD, the husband and wife. Did they get taken care of? Because she had called a couple of times.
Yeah, Ames was working on getting that resolved.
They get back to her because I know there was an issue with some contact there.
Sure, I'll, I'll follow up and make sure that they were, that was resolved.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then just maybe get back to council and just let us know, just in case she calls again, I'd like to have an update for her. It, it's been a while since I've heard maybe from other council members as well, but I just want to make sure I was taken care of. Also, could we get an update on the costs associated with the sewer lines and the lift station upgrades required to put the Amberwood and the Raven developments in? In other words, the east side developments. I know we talk about how everything goes up every couple of months and with inflation. I'd like to get a new number on that. Could you put that together for us and, and do a presentation so we know how about, not about, but the projected cost to do that right now?
Yeah, are you, are you looking for an engineer's estimate or the actual bid amounts? Because I think the, the numbers that we have are, were given to us directly from the owners of the projects because they received their estimates from their engineers. So it would be dependent on whether they have updated costs. So as soon as we can get those, I would, and with the approval of, of the developers themselves, we can, you know, share those numbers as well.
I think it's relevant because we had this presentation with the E I F D, which could be used for that to really spur that to finally push folks over the line to start turning dirt, actually putting those, those homes in.
Yeah, the E I F D, to your point, Mayor, would actually probably take about five years to really generate enough funds to, to even begin using any money for infrastructure development. I think the projects you're referring to are more immediate in, in nature, but I think, and that's why we were looking at the west side of town because that has a longer development horizon than sort of the Amberwood and Dinuba lines. But we can overlay the E I F D anywhere we want, so that's not going to be an issue.
Cool. And I had that, I guess, that vision going on because I've been hearing about Amberwood since I got on ten years ago. And we're always have the same issue, always have the same issue. So, you know, when you say five years to some, it's like, wow, that's a long time, but it's really not. It's really not. When you're looking at twenty-two hundred home P U D or development, I mean, that's whatever we can do now to kind of move things along and to put skin in the game like we're doing with the CID, I, I think it would be helpful, and I just want to keep a handle on those costs if we could to make sure we know what we're dealing with in terms of the sewer. So if we could put that back on the agenda, when you have the data, that would be great. Thank you. Item two, I believe that we're going on the first anniversary of our City Managers, City Management of our city. And I believe part of the contract was an annual review. And I believe that's December, and I believe the contract stipulated something about thirty days from the higher date. So I don't know if you've thought about that or if you have any ideas in terms of how you would like that review to go and how we can make it collaborative.
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. I was hoping to place it on the December fifth close session agenda, which I think is typical for employee evaluation. So if that's okay with the council, and then if there's a specific way, you know, that you would want to, to handle that, then I can, I can get with you, Mr. Mayor, and anybody else on the council for feedback.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right. And then I attended a Fresno COG meeting, Council of Governments. Also attended, tried to attend a Fresno County Rural Transit Agency, but there wasn't a, a quorum. And unfortunately, this, that was the meeting when F C R T A was gonna vote to provide the additional funds for the maintenance facility, which has now gone from eleven million to fifteen million. So because there was no quorum, we couldn't vote on it, and what was going to be completed by next year is now going to be a month later next year with construction commencing pretty soon here. And it just got put back a month, unfortunately, but, you know, I'm looking forward to, if I'm still around, being able to vote on that for this very worthy project. For Selma, I wanted to say I also attended a Cal Vans meeting with the Cal Vans lobbyist talking about, you know, where the grant opportunities are for Cal Vans this year, and it kind of brought me to think about Townsend. We haven't seen our city's grant writer in a long time. Are they still around?
No, the, the agreement with Townsend expired in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So we, they haven't been under contract for quite some time. We did issue an R F P for grant writing and legislative advocacy services, and that's going to be on the council's agenda for the December fifth meeting.
Okay. We just haven't seen anything on grants in a long time, and I think it's important, given what, especially what we heard on the E I F D grant. The grant part is a really crucial component of that.
As you heard, with the ATP grant, we have been submitting grants, not necessarily with Townsend specifically, but we have been working on a project-by-project basis with, you know, other consulting grant firms or engineers. For example, what was another one that, that we recently did? Oh, Chris Com assisted us with the body worn cameras grant. We weren't successful with that grant, unfortunately, but, you know, because they were familiar with that matter, you know, they were able to assist us. But we've been kind of going on a grant-by-grant basis with who we use.
Okay. It might just benefit the city to get a grant writer that's maybe has a little history with Selma and can gets, can get down and know what city, the city needs and kind of get a relationship there. Looking forward to that. And I want to thank everyone who exercised their democratic right of voting. Since the last council meeting, we had an election, and I want to thank everyone who ran, and I want to thank everyone who voted. Do we have any oral communications to end our evening? Do we have anybody on the phone? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.